The councilors and our guests could please take your seats. Mr. Clerk, I'm going to call this meeting to order and ask that you call the roll.
Counselor Hurst.
Present.
Counselor Shea.
Absent.
Counselor Twigs.
Counselor Allen.
Present.
Counselor Rook.
Absent.
Counselor Bud Williams.
Present.
Counselor Orlando Ramos.
Absent.
Counselor Marcus Williams.
Present.
Counselor Gomez.
Here.
Counselor Ash.
Absent.
Counselor Edwards.
Present.
Counselor Walsh.
Here.
Counselor Finn.
Present. The council and our guests, please rise for a moment of silence. Tonight's moment of silence is going to be offered for Ronald Brace III, Springfield native and football player of great acclaim. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Counselor Williams.
Mr. President, without objection, we have a matter, item four, have people here from Boston, we can maybe get them back before it starts raining. Without objections, four.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Mr. Clerk, item number four, hearing no objection. Will the clerk please recognize the councilors in seats number five, seven, and 10?
Counselor Allen.
Oh, two.
Counselor Shea.
Present.
Seat two, seat five.
Counselor Allen.
Rook. Rook is five.
Counselor Rook. Counselor Ramos. Counselor Gomez. Counselor Ash.
Okay, got to get numbers underneath everybody.
All right, item number four, Mr. Clerk.
Item number four, special act for a special permit at the address known as 858 State Street and 864 State Street.
Okay, this is a public hearing being called to order, consisted with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A pursuant to the 2015 Rules and Orders, 16 Rules and Orders of the Springfield City Council. Each petitioner will have up to 20 minutes to present their case. If there are opponents, they will be offered that same 20-minute period. There is a 10-minute rebuttal portion if necessary for all opponents and proponents after that. With that, Mr. Pulsifer, you have the floor.
Good evening. My name is Gordon Pulsifer, President and CEO of First Resource Development. I'm here this evening to request a special permit for the reuse of two buildings and existing structures located at 837 State Street. This is known as the Indian Motorcycle Site. The buildings include Building B and the former Mason Fire Station. In addition, we are requesting approval for the addition of another parking lot located at SS State Street, 858 to 864 State Street, which is directly across the street. To point out what we're talking about, this is parcel B, and this is the Mason Square Firehouse, and this is the parking lot across the street. At this time, I'd like to introduce some of our development team members that are with us this evening. First of all, I'd like to introduce Michael Radner with Radner Design, he's our site engineer. Also, senior developer with First Resource Development, Brenton Pulsifer. Steve Caswell with the architectural team, our architect. Jose Reyes with First Resource Management, and Gretchen Helger with First Resource Management. Steve Severia also not with us this evening, he's one of our site engineers that has worked on the crosswalk from Fossett O'Neil. So, in the way of background, I think City Councilor Williams said it best. At a recent Outing Park ribbon-cutting, he stated, "We've been talking about Indian Motorcycle for almost 20 years now." And I thought about what he said, and I've been probably on board for five or six years of those. And it's not easy to explain, but when you step back and you take a look at this site, it's a very challenging site. We feel at First Resource Development that we have figured out a way to redevelop the entire parcel and add to the abandoned buildings that are in place. So, first, it's important to understand that Indian Motorcycle is one of the most historic landmarks in the country. Built in 1890, and was in operation through the 1950s. The Mason Square Firehouse was purchased by the city in 1886 and was built in 1910, and was used by the city up to a little over 20 years ago. So, and second, the property is virtually an island. It's sandwiched between State Street, Rutland Street, and Wilberham. So, this makes it very challenging to create parking that would be needed for any redevelopment of the vacant parcels that have existed there for years. So, Gretchen, can you show us the original picture of Indian Motorcycle? Because it's important to understand that the parcel has half been demolished. And in the early 1900s, you can see half of it's removed. A train used to go through the middle of it, pick up the motorcycles, distribute them across the country and across the world in the World Wars. And so, over the years, half the site has been removed. And so, it's important. It's not only important for the history of the project, but the background and the history that's been created in the city with the Indian Motorcycle, that we preserve the rest of it. And the rest of it is the parcel B and the Mason Square Firehouse. And so, our development plan includes placing the two vacant buildings back in service by building residential apartments. In parcel B, we are planning 45 apartments, 21 bedrooms, 22 bedrooms, and five three bedrooms. In the Mason Square Firehouse, we are planning 15 apartments, 10 one bedrooms, and five two bedrooms, for a total unit count of 60 new apartments. The parking requirements under the city ordinance requires that there be 1.5 spaces per bedroom, or a total of 75 parking spaces for these new apartments. We have acquired three parcels from the city of Springfield directly across the street in order to build the new parking lot, as shown. Gretchen, you want to get out the site plan? So, as you can see, the site plan across the street for the parking, the number of parking spaces across the street will be 72, and then there'll be three next to the firehouse, totaling 75 spaces. So, in order to safely access this parking, we designed a crosswalk. The crosswalk's been designed by Steve Severia of Fossett O'Neil. This crosswalk will be a signalized pedestrian crosswalk. Plans have been submitted to DPW, and it's under review at this time. We have heard no issues with it, but it's a requirement for us as an owner and manager to have this crosswalk. You may be familiar with, there's been two deaths in the past couple of years of people crossing State Street. And I certainly appreciate the DPW and the city for having, not having, mid-station crosswalks. But the fact remains is, there is a school across the street. We have an existing 139 units there now. And if you'd sit there any given morning, nobody walks to the lights at the intersection down the streets. They walk straight across the street, and even if we were not going to put 60 more apartments there, there should be a crosswalk there. And we've lost one really nice tenant, it was a really sad story, and we don't want to see it happen again. So, DPW's been very helpful working with us on this issue, and we had a traffic study completed, and the traffic study stated it had no effect on the movement of traffic on State Street. So, and again, it's a signalized, meaning that you have to activate it if you're going to cross the street. So, it's only going to change if you activate. So, I'm not sure if there's anybody here from DPW that wants to speak about this, but if there is, we're more than happy to discuss it. We feel with this that the parking problem has been solved. The island of Indian Motorcycle now can move ahead with the approval of the city council here tonight. And just for some background, the existing buildings at Indian Motorcycle is 139 units. There are already 139 spaces for these units and these apartments. So, this part only adds to the benefit of the whole. And on any given day, you can see only half the parking lot is used now. But we wanted to make it easy, meet the parking requirements for these new units. And so, that's my presentation. In your packages, you have landscape plans, you have lighting plans, you have a site plan, architectural drawings. So, I want to thank you for your consideration, and I'd like to answer any questions that the council may have.
Okay. Do you have any questions for the petitioner? Counselor Allen?
Thanks, Mr. President. Just want to point out that the plans you just referred to in the pictures are not in our packet, that's why we've been running around here. So, all we got in the packet was just two pages. So, we're trying to get copies, but it's hard for us to ask pertinent questions. I'm going to try to ask a couple, but there's a lot of work. I just got a copy of the whole thing, it's 15 pages or so, but that unfortunately didn't make it into the packet. We're trying to rectify that. So, basically, are you asking for the two properties, 858 and 864 across the street, you already own those properties?
Correct.
So, there's the tax title process, you've already gone through all that.
Correct.
Are you going to tear them down?
Yes.
Tear them down and make parking lots out of them?
Correct.
And try to put a mid-block crosswalk in?
Yes.
Mid-block crosswalk, and that sounds fine generally. Is there something at 837 State, is that the fire station?
837 is the general address for the whole site, Indian Motorcycle.
That's the general address of the whole site, okay. And, excuse me, the, we haven't, DPW's usually not very much in favor of mid-block crosswalks. I've been involved with a couple of them myself, one being at the Dollar Tree that's going up at the corner of Island Pond Road and Allen Street, the other one being in front of the main library. There were requests there, and this mid-block crosswalk thing is not a popular request with DPW for reasons that people don't always just stop.
Right.
So, have they given you positive feedback or negative?
I think so. I see Chris here from, is Chris, no?
It's Phil.
Oh, Phil, it's Chris. I saw him here earlier.
He was here for an early meeting.
Yes, they've been very good, the whole process. And when they said they would entertain the idea, they released us to move ahead with the design. The design's been completed and submitted, and they met with our engineers last week. And from all indications, it's, the plan looks good to them. And I think they've been accept, accepted it as far as the idea and the concept of the mid-street crosswalker. With the deaths that occurred on that street, and the number of housing units that are there, I think it became obvious to us all that we needed to solve the problem. And it's one of the issues why Indian Motorcycle has not moved forward all these years. And to solve that parking problem, I mean, we've talked about above-ground, below-ground parking, it's just cost prohibitive. And this really solves the problem. But in the end, I think most people will be just parking in the main lot, and this will be overflow parking. But the ordinance states one and a half spaces per bedroom, and let's face it, parking's always better to have as you move forward into the future. And so, I think, I couldn't come in here with this plan without that crosswalk. Inconsciously, I just couldn't, after what's happened out there. And so, and DPW's been good. You know, it was like you said, Counselor, they weren't, it's not something they want to prove. And they came right out, and we looked at it, we sat on that street, and it became obvious, because he watched the mothers walk with their kids right across State Street to that school across the street or the playgrounds.
Right, right. Yeah, like in front of the library, they try to funnel people down to the light at Maple to cross over and then walk up to the parking lot. Basically, it doesn't work it like you'd like it for. So, many people want to just cross. So, was there a fatality next year?
Last year, we lost one of our best tenants.
That's what you were referring to.
It was a Friday night, and it was rainy. She ran across the street to the store, and that was it. And she was a great tenant, she had a little baby, and it was just really sad. And I said, "We really have to do something about this."
Very sad. Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Williams, excuse me, Counselor Walsh, then Counselor Williams, I forgot.
Thank you, Mr. President. Will there be any significant changes to the facade? Is the Mason Street Firehouse going to look very different, or?
Not a lot different. Keep in mind, these are historic buildings, and they'll all be subject to approval by Springfield Historic Commission and the Park Service. So, it'll be very in-keeping in the way it looks, but all-new windows, and Masonry will be cleaned and restored. And so, but you'll drive down State Street, and it'll be lit up, and it will show the beauty of the building, it's going to be magnificent.
Well, you are a known quantity to majority of the members of the Springfield City Council, and all the projects that you have brought to Springfield, they may have been challenges also, but they have really improved the neighborhoods that they are in. I think you said at an event I went to, that what you did in the South End at Outing Park is a model for the country.
Mm-hmm.
And what you've done on the Federal Street. I mean, these projects have always improved the neighborhood, the quality of life for the people who live there. They're beautifully designed, and you also have many safety features, including substations. I don't know if you're able to do that with this particular project?
We will.
But I mean, you have a, Mr. Pulsifer has a track record that we can really be proud of, and I think it's great that you're going to be doing another project in the city of Springfield, because that means we're going to have another success. And I'm very pleased to support you tonight on this, and whatever you bring forward, because it's always a win-win for you, for the city, and the residents.
Thank you.
Counselor Williams.
Or, just a quick question, excuse me. Now, I know that you've allotted 75 parking spaces for the residential units, but how will you regulate the, I guess, the flow of cars that are not particularly living this property?
Generally, what we do is, we have parking stickers for all our residents, and normally at sites, we have a tow service to deal with people. But this site's a little different. I mean, you probably won't be there unless you live there for the most part, it's not in the middle of the city, per se, where you have on-street parking. There is no on-street parking there. So, if you pull into the parking lot there, you would be a Mason Square resident.
Okay. I just, I guess, one of my concerns is the fact, you know, if a family wants to have visitors, you know, where would they essentially park?
No, they're allowed to park in the parking lots.
They are? Okay, thank you.
Counselor Williams.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Gordon, is it going to be a gated parking lot, or is it just wide open?
It's wide open.
It's going to be wide open?
Yeah, because we can't slow down coming off of State Street.
Going in.
Counselor, it's, you know how traffic moves there, you're going to be able to get off the street.
Well, I just, very excited, very happy. That project has been studied more than the U.S. Constitution. We have been trying to get a preferred developer, we've had countless number of preferred developers for that. Motorcycle for the fire station, first of all, and you come along and going to make, it's a win-win for the city. That is the middle of Springfield. That is the center of Springfield, Massachusetts. When you get up in the fire station, you look out, you can see the Pioneer Valley. I've toured that building many times, but I've just, it's the gateway into Mason Square, and it's going to do wonders for the community. Now, by way of, he already owns the 139 units, right?
Correct.
He owns that. Now, Henry Twigs, you'll remember this, parcel B, Mr. President, was always for economic development. That's what that parcel was intended to be when we secured the deal with the city for the four-point acres of land, which was early childhood. But we've tried and tried, tried to develop that. And then Gordon Pulsifer comes along, and he's going to make housing units, and I want to commend the mayor, because I think the mayor went along with the idea. You come in there based upon your reputation, because you do have a stellar reputation, as Counselor Walsh has alluded to. But that was supposed to be for economic development. That has not happened. So, you make housing units, and it's a solo project, it's not AIC's project, this is Mr. Pulsifer's project. I want people to understand that he's putting his best foot forward, the Hollywood section, Worthington Street, you're just magnificent. There are not many individuals that come down here that we kind of like give a rubber stamp to, you're one of them. I really mean that, and I often say about that. But Mr. Twigs, you'll be very happy, it's a win-win for Mason Square, it's going to beautify that, and hopefully it would spur other economic development for the arteries that run off Catherine Street and Eastern Avenue, and Hancock and Wilberham Road and stuff. So, I'm just excited to be part of this. It's been a long time coming, people have waited years and years, they've been fighting to get this done. You come along, and you're going to make it happen. So, I want to thank you, sir, plan to support this, hope this council gives you a resolving vote that you need. Now, just one more question, in terms of the parking, and there's a commercial spot that's next door to that.
Yes.
If there's any overflow parking, would you have any, would you allow parking if they need?
We don't have a problem with that.
Okay, that's very good. So, with that said, Mr. President, this is a win-win for the city and for the Mason Square community. And are you going to put a motorcycle out there in front of something?
We are.
Really?
We're going to try to figure out how to build it in.
Because that was the first motorcycle made in the whole wide world, right there in Mason Square. Thank you, Gordon.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Counselor Twigs?
Mr. President, I am almost inclined, I have to rise. My dear beloved counselor said that this is a win-win for the city of Springfield, it is a win-win for Mason Square. But I want the people in Mason Square to know that Bud Williams has already said this is a win-win for us. Now, Mr. Pulsifer, we appreciate all of the work that you've done in the past, and I know your records precede you. I think a couple of things the neighbors might want to know is, how many units we're going to put in there, I think he said?
Counselor, we're going to put 45 units in the parcel B.
Parcel B.
And 15 into the Mason Square Firehouse.
Forty-five and 50.
Right.
You know the breakdown yet?
Excuse me?
You know what the breakdown of the units is going to be?
Yes. The 45 units is broken down by 21 bedrooms, 22 bedrooms, and five three bedrooms. In the firehouse is 10 one bedrooms and five two bedrooms.
Wow. Okay. Now, the question of this, overpass over State Street, you said that DPW has been working with you on that?
Yes.
So, that means we'll go up a few steps?
Oh, no, it's not a bridge, it's a crosswalk. And it'll have a signal.
I'm trying to get.
It'll be a signalized pedestrian crossing. So, you'd walk up?
I don't have to go up a few flights?
No, no.
I want it out there so that you can explain it.
No, no problem.
A crosswalk is, we're going to cross over State Street. So, I wanted you to explain it, that's why I took the liberty of being ignorant about it.
No, that would be a solution, but I'm afraid if we put a bridge, no one would use that either.
Wouldn't even go up there, huh?
Right, they wouldn't go up there, they're just going to walk straight across the street, like we probably all would.
(laughing) Hear that, bud?
I'm not sure that if we put a bridge, that anyone would use that.
(laughing) So, what is your timeline?
Timeline is to, after we receive this approval, is to move ahead with funding. So, probably start construction mid-year next year. Plans are all ready to go. So, it's just a matter of closing on the funding.
Well, it's a win-win, so you don't have to worry about me not supporting that. It's one of those kind of projects I will support, especially that is in my district. You need to know, we're building units now, that would be a good place to put a nice store or something, a drugstore or something. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counselor Marcus Williams.
Just very briefly, in regards to the actual apartments, is it going to be mixed income subsidized?
It will be mixed income.
Oh, really?
Yeah. And so, the 139 units that are there right now are 100% occupied, and we have a mix there.
Very happy to hear that. Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions for the applicant? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none, that, oh, one more.
Howdy, my name is Lamont Clemens, the president of Ignite Council, but I'm just kind of speaking as just a citizen here tonight of Springfield, Massachusetts. Obviously, First Resources and the reputation of Mr. Pulsifer is just absolutely incredible. The fact that he builds in places where a lot of people really wouldn't, and really assists properties that a lot of people really wouldn't, really speaks in volumes about his character, and really, really, you know, warms my heart personally, just because I get to see areas that have been run down for years in the city in which I was born and bred be flipped into properties and done the right way. In opposed to, you know, putting in minimal expenses on every single detail, they definitely are willing to spend that extra dime, which, you know, obviously takes money out of the company's pockets and puts it into the right places. So, it's just incredible what you guys have done. Our family happens to have some properties in that area, so we're absolutely excited to see State Street lit up, as you would say, as well. So, I'm just thankful, and just wanted to speak in favor. I think it's a beautiful thing for the city.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Okay, seeing none, that closes this portion of the hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Say again, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Any questions from councilors for the applicant before I close the hearing? Okay, that closes this portion of the hearing and the hearing. Mr. Clerk, roll call is required.
Thank you.
On granting the special permit, Counselor Hurst.
Yes.
Counselor Shea.
Yes.
Counselor Twigs.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Rook.
Yes.
Counselor Bud Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Ramos.
Yes.
Counselor Marcus Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Gomez.
Yes.
Counselor Ash.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Counselor Finn.
Yes, more than sufficient. Counselor Hurst on the reasons. All those in favor of the conditions, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Special permit is approved. Congratulations. Counselor Twigs?
Item four.
Okay. Thank you. Item number six.
Yes.
Okay. Without objection, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Clerk, before you call that, I have a couple of public service announcements. Again, we're joined here tonight by a school committee member from Ludlow, Chip Harrington. Thank you for being here with us tonight, this is several meetings in a row. Also, I was glad to see Mr. Clemens get up and speak. I want to congratulate him on his 40 Under 40 Award, as well as our own Counselor Adam Gomez. Congratulations to you. you. From Business West. Actually, also, another Springfield resident, Laura Walsh, Springfield Parks Department employee, and daughter of our colleague, Kadee Walsh, is also an honoree, so congratulations, Laura.
Thank you for that.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, item number six, please.
Item number six is an application for a special permit to renovate and reopen a pre-existing non-conforming use at a property known as 232 Orange Street.
Anyone wishing to speak on the petition? Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, my name is Melissa Long, I represent the petitioner, Erica Nunez. And, oh, that's much better. Hello, my name is Melissa Long, I represent Ms. Erica Nunez, the petitioner for the special permit, and at this time, I want to ask if the city council would grant a continuance of this hearing to your next regularly scheduled meeting for a special permit?
Counsel Shea.
I'm the last caller coming up with the side of the consent committee. We have a hearing on us, we have a motion.
Second.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of referral to the committee on special permits chaired by Counselor Shea, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Matter is referred to committee.
Thank you.
Okay, back to the regular agenda, Mr. Clerk, item number one.
Item number one is an application for a special permit for motor vehicle sales at a location known as 638 Wat Wuthington Street.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application, please come forward. Say again, anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application? This is Orges Candido Trustee.
175.
638 Wuthington Street. Okay. Is there a motion to leave this matter on the table?
Motion made.
Okay, motion made by Counsel Rook, is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Edwards. All those in favor of laying this matter on the table, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it.
Item number two is an application for a special permit for motor vehicle rentals at a property known as 2505 Main Street.
Okay. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this application, please come forward. Good evening, sir. Please state your name and address for the record.
Jose Escobano, and I'm sorry, I don't have the address in front of me, but I'm representing Petey's Texaco.
Thank you.
And I just want to speak in favor of Petey's Texaco, they're requesting a special permit. They've been in business for over 30 years in the community. It's a family business, and they're looking to stay in business and support the community by providing quality service, as they've done for over 30 years. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Counsel Gomez.
I just want to say that we've, they've met with the neighborhood board, and the neighborhood board fully supports New York City Council Neighborhood Board, and also, myself, I fully support them. They've been a pillar of our community in the North End. You know, I still go to the, to Petey's to make sure that they get the business that they solely deserve, you know, whenever you have something going on, sometimes the, the owner, his father, now Danny's actually, Daniel's taken over for his father, you know, and now he's acquired some more partners, and they've been giving back to the community for over 30 years. It brings me great pride, aside from growing up with them, and now we're becoming men and seeing them take over our family, following our father's footsteps, and, you know, just making sure that our North End is, is taken care of, you know, this is something big, this is something that we're all happy for in our neighborhood, and I just want to say that, um, thank you for, for hearing Mr. Escobano, which is representing Mr. Diaz, but I'm in fully support of this, this special permit.
Counsel Williams.
Yes, Mr. President, I too want to rise to support this. Petey's been in the North End many, many years, I'm glad the son's taken over for the dad, who I go way back with, and that's a real, that's the real deal. And they're doing something unique, Mr. President, tonight, which a lot of, I think stations are gonna come in, they want to rent U-Hauls, and they have to be licensed. I think the code enforcement is really cracking down on folks renting U-Hauls without the proper permit. So we always want to support them by icon businesses in the city, and as Counsel Gonzalez has said, they've been strong for many, many years, supporting this community, and I think a lot of people have a lot of money down there, but you'll get it one day. Credit's always good.
Okay, any other counselors? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Say again, anyone wishing to speak in favor? That closes this portion of the hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Any other questions for the applicant? One of the conditions here is for five rental vehicles, not more than five, to be stored on premises, I believe that at one time, is that something we discussed, Counsel? All right, seeing no opposition, that closes this portion of the hearing and the hearing. Mr. Clerk, roll call.
On granting the special permit, Counsel Hurst.
Yes.
Counsel Shea.
Yes.
Counsel Twigs.
Yes.
Counsel Allen.
Yes.
Counsel Rook.
Yes.
Counsel Bud Williams.
Yes.
Counsel Gomez.
Yes.
Counsel Gomez.
Yes.
Counsel Ash.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Counsel Finn.
Yes, more than sufficient, Counsel Hurst on the reasons.
The specific site is in appropriate location for such a use, structure, or condition. The use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. Adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use, to incorporate the planning staff analysis into the decision at the basis of the findings.
All those in favor of the conditions, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Special permit is approved. Congratulations. Okay, Mr. Clerk, item number five?
Wait, one, three.
Three, excuse me, three.
Item number three is an application for a special permit for motor vehicle rentals at a property known as 175 Chestnut Street.
Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? State your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, good evening, my name is Danny Adorno, I'm at 113 Summers Road in Hamden.
Thank you.
I am the area field manager for U-Haul, I generally represent the U-Haul affiliate dealerships, and at this time, just like our previous location on Main Street, Tire Track has been in business also for like 28 years in the downtown area, and he's just looking to serve the community with, you know, also the U-Haul moving trucks as well. And Mr. Andrews couldn't be here tonight, so I'm here to represent him, and we fully support him on this, on this move. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Say again, anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, that closes this portion of the hearing. Anybody in opposition? Any questions from the council for the applicant? Okay, seeing none, that closes this portion of the hearing and the hearing. Mr. Clerk?
On granting the special permit, Counsel Hurst.
Yes.
Counsel Shea.
Yes.
Counsel Twigs.
Yes.
Counsel Allen.
Yes.
Counsel Rook.
Yes.
Counsel Bud Williams.
Yes.
Counsel Gomez.
Yes.
Counsel Ash.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Counsel Finn.
Yes, more than sufficient, Counsel Hurst on the reasons.
The specific site is in appropriate location for such a use, structure, or condition. The use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. Adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use, to incorporate the planning staff analysis into the decision at the basis of the finding.
All those in favor of the conditions, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Special permit is approved. Item number five, Mr. Clerk.
Item number five, a special permit for an expansion of existing hospital use located at 759 Chestnut Street.
Okay. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Good evening, sirs. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening, I'm Sean Govan, address is 137 Bumstead Road in Munson, Massachusetts. This is my partner, Chris Tate, with DuSet Associates.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks, I'm director of facilities at Bay State Health for the last 10 years. We're here tonight to request a special permit for the expansion of the existing hospital use and related facilities to include the property known as 257 Marvin Street. We've got some plans here. The existing site is adjacent to our existing power plant. The power plant itself, the structure, was built over, built over 80 years ago. The existing oilers that it houses and other associated equipment is over 40 years old, with a very low, low efficiency. Bay State for the last two years, has, excuse me, in the last five years, has been on a sustainability journey, and we've implemented at least 50 different sustainable energy reduction projects, which resulted in substantial reductions in greenhouse gases. The crown jewel of any sustainability project is a, is a combined heat and power plant. As we look at, in terms of innovative solutions to replacing and aging and outdated and inefficient oiler plant, which is with a nameplate efficiency rating of under 80% currently, the best and sort of brightest in terms of hospitals have been able to utilize clean fuel technology such as a combined heat and power plant. Chris, can you just turn the, just so I can see the, slightly, perfect, thank you. You can see the, the gray area is the proposed CHP plant, it's, it is a less than 5,000 square foot addition, the actual lot occupied by 257 Marvin Street is about 8,000 square feet, so it's a very modest expansion to the hospital campus. The location of the plant is very deliberate in that we need, we're not closing our existing power plant, and we'll need it for backup, we'll need it for backup uses. So having a parallel plant allows us, in the terms of, from a resiliency standpoint, to, should one plant go down, we'll have the second plant ready for operations in there. It is also deliberate in the sense that the equipment stored within it will be a 4.6 megawatt generator, a chillers, along with a heat recovery steam generator inside the plant there. It will provide 80% of the, of the utilities, it'll produce chilled water, steam, and electricity for Bay State Medical Center, resulting in about $2.7 million of financial savings each year. As I said previously, the existing boilers are 40 years old. This is, by way of background, the, this is a $27 million project, and we have achieved $13 million with the city of Springfield's help in, in grants.
Thank you.
It's part of the Housing and Urban Development partnership with the city of Springfield, as well as the Department of Energy and Resources. Massachusetts was one of the first states in the country to put money towards energy resiliency with five different natural disasters in this area. Currently, right now, if a natural disaster were to, an environmental disaster were to hit, Bay State can stay open without, without power from the grid for about 96 hours. We are the only Level 1 trauma center in western Massachusetts, and we serve all of those needs. So we could keep our doors open for 96 hours. With the combined heat and power plant, we would be able, we would be able to stay open for over 30 days. This plan is designed to run for the next 35 years, so it's very much part of the long-term master plan. In the, the Housing and Urban Development was $5.1 million, the Department of Energy Resources was $2.8 million, and our partner, EverSource, has contributed $5 million. Bay State will go for public bonds for the remainder of the funds to support this, support this complex. In a, in a time of very restricted capital on all of healthcare, this is a very large investment for the, for the health center, and it's certainly going to support Bay State for the, for the next 35 years. Chris, if you can just take the next slide in terms of the elevations. Very standard, sort of industrial building to house this 4.6 megawatt turbine. These turbines are very common, in fact, the partner that we have is Waldron Engineering, they put it on the Bank of American building on the seventh floor in Manhattan on there, so you'll see it's a, it's a very modest addition. We should also, when this is complete, our, we will reduce our greenhouse gases, our emissions, by over 13,000 metric tons of harmful greenhouse gases each year by this plant as well. We also, Bay State, in the, over the last five years, with the sustainability projects that we've done, we have been recently awarded the Emerald Award by Practice Green Health, which is, recognizes one of the top three hospitals currently in New England for our sustainability initiatives. Our goal over the next year is to be in the top 25 nationally, in terms of helping making our communities healthier. That concludes my formal presentation. Any questions?
Counsel Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. You may not, you may or may not be aware, but the planning department analysis regarding this project is really very interesting. There's a lot in here, particularly about your, are you part of the partnership with HUD and the Rockefeller Foundation? Can you explain that a little bit?
The partnership, our partnership is a partnership with the city of Springfield.
Okay, so what is the, the point of explaining about that project and what's going to happen with this? Is it because you're doing something that affects the climate, or?
It is. You know, certainly Housing and Urban Development was looking for innovative projects from a sustainability standpoint, along with resiliency. Bay State Health being a critical access hospital, you know, our ability to stay open longer than 96 hours, and the fact that Springfield was declared a natural disaster multiple times between 2011, 2013, really was a type of projects that, of the 66 different applications that HUD received, that was why this project was, was funded.
Is this, do you receive any of that funding, or is Bay State doing this all on their own, this project?
I didn't hear that, can you repeat the question?
Are you receiving any of that funding, or is this project being financed by Bay State?
We are receiving $5 million from the Housing and Urban Development grant, we're receiving $2.8 million through Department of Energy Resources, was also a partnership with the city, and we're receiving $5 million from, from EverSource. Bay State is expecting to be funding, self-funding about $14.4 million of this project.
Wow, that's quite a price tag for, and I was very happy to read in the last paragraph that you've met with the Springfield Historic Commission, and as a result of the city council that I think we recently passed, the demo delay, you are not going to be tearing down the house, is that correct?
That is correct.
And was that a difficult decision, or was it, had you thought of that yourself, or?
You know, it was, it was not a difficult decision. We have, we have an open lot that we were able to combine, and we think that it helps, helps improve the neighborhood as well by relocating that house, so we need that, we need the, we're 1.8 million square feet, and we need that house, so it really helped us, that instead of, in lieu of demolishing it, it really helped Bay State to relocate it.
Is the house currently occupied?
The house is currently occupied.
Okay, so, so when you move it, the people that are there, will they move also, or?
Yeah, we're not exactly sure what the, the permanent use would be, whether the offices or, or whatnot, but it would have to temporarily move the occupants while we move it in, so we're in a, we're in a master plan to see what would go back in.
Okay, very interesting project, thank you.
Counsel Finn.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is, this is a project that's in my district, it is on the south westerly portion, it borders right along Ward 1, and Counsel Gomez in the North End, but the Atwater Park Civic Association, which is probably the smallest civic associations of, of any across the city, but one of the toughest to get an approval from, did meet with this group, and there's a lot of things to be excited about, about this project. You know, every single level of inquiry, whether it was sound, or infrastructure improvements, or what are you going to do with the house, how are you going to handle the butters, how are you going to handle sidewalks, all of those things, from a city betterment perspective and a neighborhood perspective, were done just top of the line. This building is going to be pushed back farther from the curb than the original structure that's there now. The house, which currently sits on the parcel, which is owned by Bay State, is going to be moved to another section of Pratt Street to continue the historic nature of the neighborhood and to preserve the house, I think, as Counsel Walsh intimated, in small part due to the demo delay ordinance that this council passed some years ago now.
Wesley Jane.
But, the project as a whole is a part of what I have seen to be a very smart growth strategy by Bay State across the board for the last several years, with the Hospital of the Future. They partnered with us in terms of helping to secure both federal and local funding to repair the long, low-graded Van Horn Dam. We expect to break ground on that before some- We expect to break ground on that before summer really kicks off, so by mid-June. That's a project that we've been really waiting for, for a long time in my community, and it represents a great risk to this hospital and all the investment that this great institution has made in our community. So this physical plant, at first blush, there was people that were really sort of skeptical and nervous about it. You're taking an industrial-type use and pushing it into a neighborhood, but there are sound studies that have been conducted. They are spending millions and millions of dollars on building the concrete infrastructure to house these turbines that are going to be located in this physical plant, to make sure that there is no impending noise. The butters have been contacted, and I can't say enough good things about Bay State as a community partner, but also about this project and the way that they've handled it professionally. So I think that this is going to be a great thing for the hospital, and I thank them for their commitment to the community and doing things that didn't necessarily help Bay State's bottom line, but helped the community wrap their heads around how this could be a good project for all of us, and we need more corporate partners like Bay State for that reason.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Counselor Williams.
I was just curious as to how you'll cover that $14-million gap in funding?
How are we going for financing?
Yes.
It will be public bonds.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Allen.
Nice, Mr. President. Could you ask Mr. Adorno to come out, please? Is he still here? Hi, Phil. We're talking about the Bay State proposed power plant, or I'm not sure I'm using the right terminology, but I'm sure you know what I mean. Mike just spoke, Counselor Fenton just spoke, President Fenton about, because it's in his neighborhood, and spoke very soundly and positively about it. As I was sitting here before he spoke, I thought about things like, has our Facilities Department, our Parks and Facilities, Pat Sullivan, DPW, the other types of -- this is a massive project from a just going into a neighborhood kind of thing. Have we had the right members of the city look at this from all angles, from a safety standpoint, et cetera?
I believe so. I mean, again, most of those departments were part of this larger HUD resiliency grant, so they were all involved in the initial application to HUD, as well as reviewing the projects. You know, DPW, obviously, will have to get in as far as the drainage and the, you know, the site layout is, but I don't believe this is going to trigger any traffic concerns for DPW.
Right.
But certainly, my -- one of my main concerns when we first met was the noise, because, you know, they are, you know, getting closer to the neighborhood, but, you know, as Counselor Fenton had mentioned, they did assure myself, as well as the neighborhood, that the noise issue would be taken care of through the soundproofing of the building, because it is kind of the -- it kind of took me back when they described it as kind of being a jet-engine type of power plant, but certainly, certainly this has been, they have been a partnership in this whole process through this HUD resiliency grant. To Counselor Walsh's question, that was kind of, as was alluded to, it really was HUD was looking for projects that captured this kind of innovative type of thinking and resiliency versus just a standard, let's build another generator. So I think that that's what came out of this whole process, which was a, you know, a two-year-plus process to get this grant in the first place, so.
Yeah, it sounds like a great project, all the sustainability and all the rest of that. Sounds visionary and sounds like the type of thing we'd want to support. My questions are more from the safety and soundness, and is it in the right place? And I'm not here to say it is or it isn't, just to make sure that the people in the city who would be looking at it from that point of view have.
I believe they have.
You believe they have?
Yep.
And they're fine, and they're fine with it. Okay. Let me, could I just ask one other question? So it says a $27-million project, am I right?
Yeah, yes, it is.
And five million, I mean, you were funding fourteen.
That's right.
Out of Bay State yourself, privately funding. The other thirteen, five million was coming from the HUD grant?
Five million from the HUD grant. 2.8 million from the Department of Energy Resources. D O E R also had a competition that Bay State and the City of Springfield also did win.
Is that a state or federal thing?
That is a state. And then Eversource, our utility company, is also partnering for a $5-million.
And what does Eversource care to put money in?
Eversource is supporting any sustainability project that we can really come up with, so they're.
I'm sorry, could you say it again?
So Eversource has been a partner of ours for the last five years and have supported over forty different projects, really, in terms of anything to do to reduce energy is where Eversource has come in.
Okay, great. So basically, half of the funding from those three sources, and, you know, roughly speaking, half from you. And has our, this is also that 17 million is coming from HUD, five million would go to this.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Fenton.
Mr. President, I'll be brief, because I know I already spoke. I just, I feel compelled to add one other thing to this. In the course of this process, because I think this is such a good story, I had the good fortune to meet one of the new senior executive vice presidents at Bay State. Her name's Jennifer Endicott. And in the course of our early discussions, I came to find that she was a neighbor. She recently moved from Florida, relocated to Springfield, felt it was important to be invested in the community in which she's serving in as a member of the Bay State Executive Team, and it's just, too often, it's not the story that we hear about some of our corporate sponsors, so I wanted to share that with you, that those types of things are happening, and Bay State is actively trying to promote homeownership for young professionals and middle-class people that are trying to buy their first house in the City of Homes. They have the best, in my opinion, homeownership program by a private entity in the city. It's $7,500 towards a down payment or any closing costs of any nature for employees of Bay State that buy a home in Springfield. And the City Council YP Committee has been doing some work on trying to aggregate some data that other area employers are, you know, what other area employers are doing, and Bay State is the standard. It is the gold standard in terms of helping with their neighborhood program, and I just, I can't say enough about what they've done to try to foster growth and stabilize our community. And leadership comes through example, so I'm happy to have one of their new executive vice presidents in their leadership circle with their new CEO, a neighbor, and we should all be happy with that.
Counselor Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask my colleague, Counselor Fenton, in your discussions with the neighborhood groups, were they concerned about noise, or is this something that they felt has been covered? Or is there a lot of noise in a project like this for other butters?
There was extensive discussion about lighting and noise. We reviewed construction plans and went over the actual capital amounts that are going to be spent on building this structure, and based on that analysis and that research, and we had, you know, an architect, an engineer, and a lawyer that was helping us analyze this, I want to, to that point, I think it's important to note, what is the cost of, what is the capital cost of the build-out for this structure? Not the equipment inside, but the actual.
Sure, the capital cost is just under $5 million for the build-out.
And what's the square feet of this structure?
You know, the plant itself is 4,000 on the first floor, so.
So it's a 4,000-square-foot building. There's plenty of houses in McKnight that are bigger than that, and they're spending over $4 million on it. What are they spending it on? They're spending it on the concrete foundation that needs to be poured to stabilize the structure so that there's no shaking, and that there's the ability to insulate the walls from noise in the surrounding community. So that's what the sound study showed. It was a question that we studied extensively and came to the empirical conclusion that there would be no impact.
Do you agree with that about the sound? That's something that you took into consideration?
Absolutely. There's been, there's been five different sound studies done. The sound is covered under the Department of Environmental Protection Permit Strategies as well, and it's tightly controlled on that, and that is the reason for the structure to be what it is, because we have to keep the sound from leaving the premises, and that's what we will, that's what we are doing. So we've tested the, we know what the sound is before and after, and it's a very tightly regulated process.
Thank you.
Counselor Williams.
Good, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Just speak to the safety of this and the resilient grant, and how we arrived at this, because if we do have another catastrophe, tornado, hurricane, and everything is shut down in the city, you'll still be able to operate, keep your hospital open?
Yes.
That's part of the whole thing, is the hospital is going to stay open?
Absolutely. There's a Black Star Generator. We're essentially creating our own electricity on-site, so we will have non-grid electricity that we're creating, so we will not be relying on Eversource in a disaster. We still have, we still do have some overhead lines that feed Bay State, so if those go down, it would compromise patient care from electricity. So the fact that we're creating our own electricity, and in fact, all of the natural disasters in New Jersey and along the coast and in New York, the hospitals did remain open that had a combined heat and power plant on their campus.
That's why I was excited about the resilient grant, because if you study what happened with Sandy and all those on the East Coast, hospitals stayed open because they were on a cutting-edge technology, which I think you gentlemen are going to have. So it's a win-win for the neighborhood. Good job, Mike, win-win for the city, and it puts us in better position if something happens that we can't control.
Great project.
Any other questions from the counsel? Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this project? Please step forward. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Please step forward. Hearing none, I will now close the hearing. Any other questions further, just in the counsel? Mr. Clerk? On granting the special permit, Counselor Hurst.
Yes.
Counselor Shay.
Yes.
Counselor Twigs.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Rook.
Yes.
Counselor Bud Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Mike Fenton.
Yes.
Counselor Marcus Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Gomez.
Yes.
Counselor Ratch.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Ramos. Yes, more than sufficient. The special permit is approved.
I don't think you recorded my vote.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Special permit is approved. Counselor Hurst on the reasons.
The specific site is in appropriate location for such a use, structure, or condition. The use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. Adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use to incorporate the planning staff analysis into the decision at the basis of the findings.
All those in favor of exempting the conditions, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Is there any further business before this counsel? No further business before this body. We will stay adjourned until May 2nd.